Recall the meeting to order if you could kindly stand up so that we can remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kindly remain standing in memory of Emilien Skinnie-Pistusik. Skinnie passed away May 22nd at the tender age of 103. He was a lifelong resident of Abington, a Marine who fought in World War II, and served on the Abington Housing Authority as well as was one of the forerunners of the establishment of the management football program. And back in January, I awarded Skinnie the Boston Post King, which is symbolic of being the oldest resident of town. So we ask that we remember him and all his good works that he did for the town of Abington. Today is June 10th, 2024, and the town of Abington was actually incorporated on June 10th, 1712. So this is actually the 312th birth day of the town of Abington. Abington at those days comprised of what is now the towns of Rockland and Whitman. In 1874, Rockland split off, and they are celebrating their 150th anniversary this year, of which, just to remind the selectmen, is appropriate the Saturday in Rockland to which we've been invited to. And in 1875, Whitman incorporated on their own, and they will be having their festivities next year. We want to congratulate, as a result of the town's founding, Abington Celebrates had fitting celebrations over this past weekend culminating with fireworks. So we want to give thanks to the Abington Celebrates Committee for all their efforts on all the programs that went forth during the day. Pardon me, we have a few minutes till the first hearing. I'd like to take a couple of action discussion items. The question on the minutes of May 20th, 24, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Item number two, request for appointment to the South Hill Redevelopment Authority for the vacancy caused by the election of Roger Woodston, Board of Selectmen. Under the statute that comprised the South Hill Redevelopment Authority, the members of the Board of Directors cannot be locally elected officials. So once Roger became elected selectman, he tended his resignation. This appointment is for the unexpired term of one year till 2025. We have the application from our Andrew Burbine. Andy has immense experience with the town, having served as town moderator, selectman on the zoning board. He's currently a lawyer with a real estate practice. He currently serves on the zoning board of appeals for the redevelopment authority. He meets the statutory qualifications for the position. I was the appointee to the board, and I would recommend that Andy certainly meets that qualification. Are there any questions from the board?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Andy Burbine, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Congratulations, Andy. I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Couple more minutes here. Request for appointment to the Conservation Commission for one member, voting member effective immediately due to the resignation of Alex Leary. And then we have two applicants, but also effective July 1st. Because Paul Bunker has been elected to the Board of Selectmen, his position will be vacant. So I guess I would throw it to you, Paul, where you currently own the Conservation, are chairman of the Conservation. Who would you prefer for the current member?
They both put in the effort. They've only been on for, I don't know, five or six months. Both have started taking the MACC classes, attended site walks and meetings. But for the one-year seat, I would go with Joshua Swayze, and for the three-year, Justin Van Ness.
Okay, so the one for the unexpired term that'll be effective today, so that you can, your meeting tomorrow night, correct?
Yep.
So your motion is to appoint Joshua Swayze to that position, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor of Joshua Swayze for the unexpired term kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I will abstain because I have a permit before them.
Three in favor, one abstention. And then, so then I would imagine your motion then is for Justin Van Ness for the...
Are we gonna do Alex too, or since he's a reappointment for the...
We do that later.
Okay, do it separate, okay. Then I'll make a motion to appoint Justin Van Ness for the three-year term.
Okay.
The next second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention. Three, zero, one. The hour of 6:35 having arrived, we have a application for a common virtual license, which is a public hearing. We have a motion, somebody make a motion kindly to...
Motion to open the hearing?
A motion made to open the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. The hearing is open. Is the applicant here? For Alex Good Taste Restaurant. Could you kindly come up to the podium, if you could, please?
Can I get my ring?
Yes, if you could bring those up.
Thank you.
We have your application for a common virtual entertainment and all-alcoholic license for 1501 Bedford Street, Unit 5. Could you just tell us, 1501 is the plaza, correct?
Yes.
And where would this be within that plaza unit?
It's gonna be a function hall.
Okay.
For parties.
Yeah.
And everybody, like, if they're gonna have a wedding, parties, or any event, like parties, wedding, birthday.
Where is Unit 5, is that?
Unit 5 is next to the Thai condo, and they have a Brazilian...
Market.
Brazilian market, next to it.
Oh, the market, okay.
Yeah, the market. Where the furniture used to be.
No, it's just one floor.
One floor, yeah.
Okay. All right. I know where you are now. We have the floor layout. A copy of all your paperwork appears in order. Hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 1...
A.M.
A.M. And Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to...
2:00 a.m.
2:00 a.m., okay. That's gonna be a problem. And then Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 a.m.?
1:00 a.m.
1:00 a.m. Generally, we, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, have we approved any licenses?
No.
Okay. Our licenses, I'm just back on the board after many years, and we never approved licenses beyond 1:00 a.m. The town manager informs me. In the subsequent time, they have not either. So any license would be relegated just to 1:00 a.m.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right. Is there any questions from the board?
No.
I have no questions.
Anybody else? If not, as long as you understand the hours of operation, you have to be, we have to be assisted upon that because in that area, there's clearly, you know, residential, on the strip, there are businesses that have to close at 1:00 a.m. So you have to close at 1:00 a.m. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. Just as long as you understand that, and I want that in the record, so that you're in your knowledge that you do understand that. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the licenses with the 1 o'clock closing on Saturday night.
Okay. Just wanted to ask if there was anybody in the audience, because it's a public hearing, public records, nothing, okay. And then we...
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or voted? Mr. Woodston makes a motion to approve all the licenses as delineated with the hours as we just stipulated. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or voted, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Same to you. Item number four, vote to approve the use of Riley Field and Misby Bandstand by Abington Copes on September 19th from 4:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in conjunction with Rockland Care's to hold a vigil. What is the pleasure of the...
I will motion to approve this. They do, Abington Copes does a great job, so...
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, unanimous. You have before you the annual appointments and reappointments to become effective on July 1st. Rather than run through every name and every position, the list will be made part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes. I'll accept a motion, if the board so chooses, to just appoint everybody as delineated on the list.
I'd like to make a motion to approve everybody delineated on the list, but I have to abstain from Concon.
Okay, so let's do, everybody on the list except Concon for the present time. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Question now comes on the Conservation Commission. Is there a motion?
I make a motion?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded on Conservation, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous.
One abstention.
One abstention. Pardon me. Discussion and vote on proposed policy directives. As you may recall, at the meeting that we reorganized, I had mentioned that in the past, the Board of Selectmen, when we went over to the town manager former government 20 years ago, and this kind of happened over time, the Board of Selectmen started to get detached from what the charter said. And there was a general feeling, and it's nobody's fault, it just happened over time, that the selectmen really weren't acting as, in my opinion, that they should have been as based on a check and a balance, the way the government works and what the charter had indicated. And in doing so, I had mentioned that we were gonna have for this meeting a policy directives that the selectmen would adopt, would discuss and adopt, and they would be directives that the town manager, department, and division heads would be bound to adhere to, you know, from that standpoint. And that is what the charter indicates, that the selectmen, you know, are involved in the operation of the town through policy statements. And with that said, pardon me, I have several of them. After asking each selectman if you could get me what your thoughts were, in doing so, I compiled a list of four, and then I have one additional one based on some information that has transpired. But let's just take them very quickly, one at a time, if I may. The one I'll start off with is, just in the interest of being transparent, I'm just gonna lay it out there. In the, what we recently found in the police department is that their policies and procedures had not been kept up to date over a three-year period. That's an operational, that is a matter for operational. It's a correct statement in that the policies weren't being kept up to date. Consequently, when the department who had been accredited since 2005 went to have their accreditation renewed, they were not allowed to renew it because they have to update their policies. That's happening as we speak. And as a result of that, I think it's incumbent upon this board to then look at, okay, there's one department, now what happens in the other departments? So my motion is this, of the policy statement would be, it shall be the policy of the Board of Selectmen that the town manager shall conduct a review of all departmental policies with each respective department head to ensure that said policies are current and being carried out in the manner as prescribed, and report back to the Board of Selectmen at its meeting on September 9th, reporting on his review of the same. I think it's important that we ensure, from our standpoint, from an accountability standpoint, that the departments are adhering to their policies, not only adhering to them, but they are currently up to date. So I guess that, there's the initial first question before the Board of Selectmen as to what are your thoughts on that particular matter? I'll throw it up to you.
After you. I was just gonna say, I think it's a good policy institute considering what's going on with the inability to recertify at the police department, so...
Agreed.
Okay, so I'll make that motion, that we adopt that policy.
I'll make it as a motion. Motion to adopt this policy.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed or voted? The second one is one that came out again as a result of issues where it was brought to my attention that certain employees were allowed to take, in this particular case, motorcycles home with them, which one particular employee lived over 20 miles away. Now, I don't know the rationale as to why that was allowed. It may have very well been a good reason that I'm unaware of, but that policy has stopped. Incumbent upon that, I think it raises the question as to employees that take vehicles or allowed to take vehicles home. Some of them obviously are contractually, you have to, you know, certain department heads need it for emergency response. That's certainly understandable. But I think we need, again, a listing of where we stand as to what vehicles are being allowed, who is being allowed to take vehicles home, and is there a justification? And it doesn't hurt to have it viewed, you know, accordingly. I would like that the town manager convene a meeting of department heads and provide a listing of all vehicles that are allowed to be taken home by employees, review the list for necessity, and submit his recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for its meeting on, our next meeting on June 24th, for final determination as to what vehicles the board would allow as a matter of public policy to be taken home. Is there any discussion among the board for that?
I think this is a good one, but just, not a but, but just so everyone knows, this has been going on for years, so it certainly predates the town manager.
Well, it does, of course.
This has been going on, we were here 30 years ago, and the cars are going out left and right. So I just want to make sure people know, from my point, I just want to tighten things up because we own these employees. So if they're leaving here driving 20 miles to home or whatever, anything like that, and God forbid they get in an accident, we own them. So this is just a modern-day thing now that we need to tighten up.
And this is what, when I preface, and I'm glad you brought that up, because when I preface this, I said, this is something that has translated over 20 years. So it's something that I think the selectmen need to reinterject themselves into the operations. So it's no reflection on anybody as a result of that. It's just good public policy for us to make these review and have them come forward. And it's not casting aspersions by any stretch of the imagination. So was that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Yes.
Long-winded, but it was a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed or voted? The next three policies, the next one, it shall be the policy of the town of Abington that the town manager shall develop and report on a weekly basis to the Board of Selectmen all persons hired, promoted, or separated from service within town government under his care and control. The report shall be in the form of electronic communication to the Board of Selectmen for the purposes of keeping the selectmen informed of the personnel functions that have been authorized by the town manager. Again, we go back to, it's nothing more than keeping us as the chief elected officials informed as to what's happening, nothing more than that. And once the system is set up, it's something that can be very easily done. I had given Scott a sort of a template that I happen to like, that the Plymouth County Retirement Board utilizes, that I think, you know, is, once it's there, it's something that can be updated effortlessly, and it's not really a big deal that I would view. But it's nothing more than allowing us to be made informed of the appointments that he has made, or the personnel actions that had taken place, people that may have separated service or what have you. So at least, if we get questions, we at least know what that is.
Motion to approve the policy?
Is, motion made, is there a second?
I'll second this, it's a great policy.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. The next one, it shall be the policy of the town of Abington that all department and division heads under the organizational structure of the town manager shall report to him any and all public functions that may pertain to the respective departments as soon as has been made known to them. The town manager in return shall notify the Board of Selectmen in the event the selectmen wish to attend the same. This emanates from the fact that, again, you know, around town, there's different functions that departments are involved in, public events, that if we're not aware of, and if we're not paying attention to Facebook, we don't know. And I think it's important as elected officials that, you know, if we're available, we should be there, quite frankly. And I think this just gives it an organizational ability, streamlining the process and making it a little bit more professional in terms of making sure, you know, the information flows up to us. I don't know what's the opinion of the board?
I agree. At least usually, we can make sure one of us can make it too.
Exactly.
Everybody has commitments.
And I think that's important, quite frankly. That's why we're elected. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Last, it shall be the policy of the town of Abington that all department and division heads under the organizational structure of the town manager shall report to him any immediate and important public activities or emergencies that require the response or attention of the respective department, board, or commission. The town manager shall in turn notify the Board of Selectmen at the same for the purposes of keeping the chief elected officials informed as to the involvement of any departments under its jurisdiction. And again, it's nothing more than keeping us informed as to what departments may have had issues, just so that we're aware. And there's nothing worse as a selectman than going downtown and having somebody come up to you and say, gee, what happened the other day? I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. And I think it's, again, it's in the interest of trying to keep us engaged and informed as to what's going on. Is there any discussion among the board?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or voted? Item number seven, the community development block grant payoff forgiveness request for FY 12 case number W-093. Scott, could you kindly give us kind of a synopsis of this program? Because I know it's a prior program that I don't think any of us are involved with.
This particular one, and there's been many of these programs throughout the years. This one was FY 2012. The program through this grant, and this was between the town of Abington and Whitman. Abington was the lead on this program, so therefore, anything involved in it goes through this board. The program had monies, grant monies that went, that were made available to homeowners, and they could use them for different projects, like weatherization projects or upgrades to heating systems, roof repairs, things like that. If they could show a need for it, for, you know, for whatever reason that they needed the money. And as long as they stayed in the house for, or the structure, they didn't sell or anything for a period of 15 years, the loan would be forgiven. In many cases, the board in different rounds of this would have get, will get requests when people want to subordinate their loan, or in one case, we did have someone who sold, and they sold before the time, they paid back. In this particular case, this is the first time that, since I've been here, that they're actually asking for a waiver. They're selling the house prior to the 15-year period. The person who initially took out the loan has passed away. So they can ask this board, if they can show a hardship, they can ask for a waiver of that, of the loan. The loan amount, I believe, was $8,500.
We have a number, the paperwork before us. Is there any question or discussion from the board before we proceed?
The Senior Center was involved. They actually housed the grant at the Senior Center, and we've, and they have been there for, I believe it was five years. This was an interest-free loan for the 15 years. And they explained, they, it was actually a really great program for both Whitman and Abington. That being said, in my opinion, you knew that it was 15 years to pay back the loan. If you sold the house before, you owed that money. It was an interest-free loan. It was roofs, it was flooring, it was insulation. It helped out a lot of people in the town. I believe we had 30 clients in Abington, and I think Whitman had, I'm gonna say 22 in the first year that we did this. And I believe it was about $3 million. And that also helped the food pantry in Whitman and also the food pantry in Abington. So just give you a little background about the program.
Is there anybody here when we got to this?
Yes, sir. You wish to speak, sir?
Yes, sir.
Could you just identify yourself and your address?
John Caravolo.
Wait.
Please use the mic.
John Caravolo, 199 South Avenue in Whitman, property in question. I did make the request. I've had the honor and privilege of caretaking my dad, who was 103 and 1/2, World War II Navy veteran. He just passed last Wednesday.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. He had a heck of a run, though. And he'd be the first one to tell you that. So in caring for him in three and a half years, I had, I was small self-employed business. I worked out of my house. And between Somerville and Whitman, I couldn't, I couldn't make a go of it with the traffic situation. I just couldn't get there. And it put me in a position, I just had to, you know, use my cookie jar.
Is the, do you still, is the house...
It's got a, it's under agreement.
To be so?
Somebody put a deposit on it.
Okay.
But when this issue came up, I wanted to try to, you know, see if I could...
Okay, so the house is up for sale, and you've got it under agreement?
Yeah.
Are there any leans on the property, or is it a...
Just the town of Abington.
Okay, so it's a clean sale?
Yeah.
And how much is the, it's under agreement for how much?
$479.
$479. Okay.
Which, after the smoke clears, I'm probably gonna see around under $4, around $380, something like that. The way the market is...
I'm gonna make a motion, we decline the request. And I want to say why. The house is being sold. I think it's a great program. I followed it when you did it. We're under the criteria, sorry for the loss of your father. The loan was for your father while he lived there. He has passed. The house is being sold. I want, I just personally don't think we should waive it. I think the money should come back, and we should use it for the next person that can be helped, just like your father was when he needed it. So that's my, I'll make that as a motion.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, Mr. Woodston's made a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mr. Woodston's motion to decline the application kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, unanimous. Sorry. Thank you very much.
I did get the money.
Yeah.
You know, so I understand.
No. And I think the fact is, where you, you've got it up for sale, you've got it under agreement...
Yeah. And it was my mistake. I thought it was a 10-year window, and it wasn't.
Right.
You know, so, anyway.
We're sorry for that, I just think...
Yeah. No worries. Strictly business, that's all. Thanks very much. Okay. Okay, now item number eight, vote to designate the following positions with special municipal employee status, floodplain manager, and conservation agent, the Town Manager.
Yeah, this special municipal employee status designation under the Mass General Law 268A, this Board can assign it to certain municipal positions. In certain cases, it becomes necessary for someone who holds a position, who already works for the town, to also hold another position. And it would, under the eyes, without doing this, under the eyes of the State Ethics Commission, would cause a conflict. So by giving it this status, it takes away that conflict, saying that the Board recognizes that, you know, the importance of being able to be this, you know, flexible for these certain positions.
I'll make a motion that we designate the position as special municipal employee status for floodplain manager and conservation agent.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous. Town Manager update on the selection process and timeline for the appointment of the next Chief of Police. Before he does that, I just want to, again, in concert with what we just did on the policy directives, I just want to alert the Board, which I know the Board is understanding of, but more so for the public too, again, going back to the Charter, which is enacted 20 years ago, that in the appointment, the Town Manager makes the appointments of Department Heads and employees, that we understand, but the Selectmen have a role in that, in that the Charter provides that, that the, once the Department Head is appointed, the Selectmen show, the selection shall become effective on the 15th day following the date of notice that the Town Manager gives us, unless the Board shall, within that period, by two-thirds vote, so in other words, by four Selectmen, two-thirds of five is four, of all of its members to reject the appointment, or we could waive the 15-day period and make the appointment effective immediately. And then ancillary to that, any contract between whoever is appointed and the town has to be approved by a majority of the Board of Selectmen. So with that said, it's important that we be involved in the process so that we're confident of whom he chooses, whoever he chooses, in this particular case, it's the police chief, but, you know, on any appointment. And with that said, I think that we need to be involved in the process, not so much as, I know, and he'll go through it with the assessment panel, I've sat on assessment panels, I've run assessment panels, but I think in this particular case, he's sitting observing, you know, the assessment panel in action, so that, I think the Board needs a representative or representatives in the process, so that when it comes time to, you know, he makes his selection, and if we're comfortable with that, then fine, we're all, as they say in The Godfather Part III, our ships are all sailing in the same direction. And then we're, we then have that confidence to approve a contract. So with that said, I'll let him tell you the process.
Let me, can I just make a motion, just to stop this, and then he can?
Sure.
I wanted to make a motion that the Chair and Vice Chair to observe the assessment process and sit in on the final interviews, obviously understanding they don't participate, it's just there to observe, and I think it should be the Chairman and the Vice Chair.
Okay.
So, make that as a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Are you willing to?
Yes, absolutely.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all those in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. Okay, now, you can tell us.
All right, so the posting has been out for probably about four weeks now, but it did close this past Friday. We've received 12 applications, some of them were internal, and the remainder were external, obviously. And the next step is, we're reviewing the applications that we have received, and a questionnaire will be sent out to the applicants, sort of a essay question portion of the test, so to speak. When, as those come back, we'll sort of review, it gives us a feel of their ideas and organizational ideologies and stuff like that, and whether they're maybe a fit or not for our organization. After that point, sometime probably near the end of the month, there'll be some oral interviews, and then what we're hoping for is a full-on assessment center for probably five of the candidates, but maybe, you know, four or five of them. And we're looking at that at the week of August 12th at this point. Once that part is done, we'll narrow it down to a few, whoever the top couple are, and then we'll conduct another final interview. And then that selection will be presented to this Board. My thought would be, end of August, and maybe, with all the things that, and all the moving parts that'll go on, with it being summertime and timing on this, my guess is a announcement to this Board would be made on, like, the first meeting in September.
Okay, so, just so I'm clear, the assessment, if you're only talking, if the goal is, and they've got to go through their process, and it is, it's a process that has to shake itself out, but if you ended up with four or five, I'm guessing it'd probably be a one-day, all-day type thing?
Yes, absolutely.
And then from there, you whittle it down, and guess, I mean, the ones I've done, to do the one-on-one interviews, that whoever the finalists are, and then we can, we can go from there.
And that decision last time, and most I think, will be made end of day of the assessments.
Yeah.
The assessors and I, and whoever else is sitting, and we'll sit in and decide who should go on to the next step.
Yeah, that's fine, okay. And that's, that's the standard, standard routine. How many, do you have any idea, and it may be too early, how many assessors they're going to have?
A minimum of three, but probably four, including someone from Public Safety Consultants who we hired. So they're all chiefs or retired chiefs.
I was just going to guess that.
Every one of them.
Okay.
Can we just explain for the public about hiring the company, just so they understand how the process works? That we hire the public company that accepts the applications and?
Yeah, public safety consultants, we hire them, they'll work with us, they, this is what they do for a living, it's actually owned by Chief Russ Stevens and Chief Wayne Sampson, are both retired chiefs. And they do provide this service. Charter requires that I would work with a minimum of three other chiefs, police chiefs, on this, so this helps fulfill that, and it, you know, obviously provides that service of recruitment and then weeding through.
Good. So it's on Friday, so just to recap, it's, the deadline was last Friday?
Last Friday.
Last Friday. They're going through the applications, they're going to do habitually the questionnaires that go out, they give them a shot here at a time to respond.
Yep.
Then they'll move forward with, of the 12, assuming all 12 respond, because sometimes they don't, sometimes people have changed their heart. Then they, they'll convene, they'll do the orals, then they'll set it up for the assessment, do the all-day assessment, then whittle it down from there. So we're on, actually, we're pretty much online with what we said in the very beginning, that we were targeting Labor Day, and it sounds like we're right on track, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm still sort of factoring in what can happen in the summer.
In a way, I mean, you're dealing with people's vacations, you're dealing with, you know, some, a host of everything, trying to get everybody together, but it sounds like we're on track anyway, so. Good. Any questions from the Board?
Nope.
If not, very good, thank you. Item number 10, Town Manager repatriate $100,000 EAMAC for Economic Development for the North Abington Center.
Yeah, this is something we actually received a while ago, but we're finally kicking off the program. So we contracted, you know, through a, an RFP process, we did search out a consultant to help us with this. So the Innis Group, they do planning and work on, work on economic development. We've contracted with them, the program is geared towards, and the EAMAC was geared specifically for North Abington Center.
Mm-hmm.
Our first part is, is we will reach out to the business owners and the stakeholders in that area, and we'll talk to them what they think the issues are and what the problems are. We have sort of a twofold thing, is one part is going to be on a, you know, do we want to do some sort of program where if they reinvest, if they invest into upgrading their facades or their buildings, there's money within this that can help offset those expenses and match them to a certain percentage. And then there's also money that we'll look at and develop our own streetscapes and public scape, and improvements on that, to sort of, you know, see what's necessary to brighten up the area. Maybe it's signage and different things to help attract people and just kind of make it a nicer area where people might want to go.
That's a good idea. In fact, many, many years ago, when I was in the Governor's Office, did a similar program for North Abington, and actually, I had worked with New England Art and got the money to side their entire building as a result of that. So, good, anything we can do to help the businesses down there, that is great.
And I think as, as it develops more, and probably in September at some point, we'll have Liz Shade and Kevin Goggin come in and talk a little bit more about it.
Good, very good, thank you. The, we have a motion to enter into executive session accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the Chairman so declares, which I do, the meeting will not reconvene in open session, is the remotion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
By roll call vote, Mr. Bunker.
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Justburg?
Aye.
I vote yes, we are entered into executive session at 7:11 PM, we will not reconvene, good evening.